All right, we're going to call to order the August 22nd meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council in so. In the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by a young woman who just was playing city councilwoman for a moment, so Grace Romero, would you please lead the council and guests in the Pledge of Allegiance? Grace is coming forward. She's getting up right here. Perfect. Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding 4761 West Capitol Avenue, 501 North Harbor, 1301 South River Road. And the property APNs listed in the agenda. And to confer with our real property negotiator regarding parties Gil Lebron and Friedman, and then also separately with the California Department of Parks and Recreation. And no action was taken on any of those items. So that brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, this, the council is prohibited by state law from taking up any action or discussion on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and to turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everybody gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that simply indicates which item the council is currently considering. Also, we take the cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item. So if you're here for item 18, as soon as the staff presentation is finished and the council questions or the public testimony has begun, we don't take any additional speaking cards. So if you already know you want to speak on an item, please fill out the card as soon as you can. And then finally, we recognize that for some folks, speaking in public isn't their regular job and can promote some anxiety and hives. So we ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even applause or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have one request to speak on our item 1A, and it's by Pat Flint.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, I'd like to know the status of the overtaking of the reclamation district. If you could have a staff member get back to me, I would appreciate that. And I want to also note and put on record that I have not received my PRA request from April's request. Again, that's a violation of my Public Records Act. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And with that, we will move to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Councilmember Sandine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city-county two-by-two took place on July 25th. Councilmember Roscoe and I, that's one of our assignments. We discussed animal services in the county, and a task force meeting is going to be held on September 4th, I believe, at the Davis City Council Chambers to discuss the formation of a new, potentially new animal services JPA for the county. We then received a very thorough review of county homelessness services and housing, and heard from all of the Yolo County Health and Human Service Agency department heads. And we also took a tour of the county facilities. So it was really helpful and eye-opening to see all that, and Supervisor Viegas put that together for us. And then earlier tonight, the Sacramento-Yolo Port District Commission met, and we considered a land transfer with the city required by the Stone, required by the Stone Lock Development Agreement, which is also on tonight's council agenda. And we approved a 15-acre land lease of the North Terminal to the RRJJ Resource Management Corporation. And then we also accepted a $272,000 grant from the State of California Department of Parks and Recreation Division of Boating and Water Race, and that enables the final phase of the Lake Washington Derelict Vessel Abatement Program to be completed. And we saw some photographs of that, and it's pretty exciting to see what's happened with that in the last six years. And one of our team members, Mr. Toth, had done a great deal of work on getting that done. We also received an update on the, is it Rio Vista Bridge issue going down and up and getting stuck. And our team here is working with folks that are advocating for us to get that resolved so that we can continue ship traffic. So there's some interim solutions, and it looks like a final solution will be in the next four to six weeks, hopefully sooner.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor Protemla Desma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things to report out on tonight. Back on the 13th, which wasn't that long ago, we had a meeting of the Yolo County Transportation District. Just some, the only thing I've noted there was a presentation, financial presentation on the impacts to the district on OPEB payments, the payments that have to be made to, for the retirement pension plans of our employees at the district, which are also, as we've been talking about for some time, impacting districts and agencies across, and YCT is not immune. So we got an overview of that in context of how we're going to be treating that in upcoming budgets. On the, this past Monday, on the 20th, was the meeting of the Yellow Habitat Conservancy. And I'm back to the YCTD, when I forgot to mention that now I've been elected as vice chair of that commission, so, which came into play, will come into play as we begin working on a strategic plan, which you started talking about with YCTD. The Yellow Habitat Conservancy met on this past Monday as well. We had a business, a finance update from our executive director. And as, what we're learning with the Conservancy, first of all, we're waiting for the permits to be issued. They should be issued very soon. We're kind of, we're starting to plan for a signing ceremony for that, but we did get a very silver ringed kind of finance update. This agency is in startup mode, and so we're beginning to work on strategies to kind, to focus on the core businesses of the agency so we can actually get out and doing the business of the agency while trying to conserve expense dollars until we start to see the realization of some projects here in West SAC and the other cities across the county. So, so important work going on there. Yesterday, it's Tuesday, yeah, the 21st, was the first, the, a meeting of the countywide successor agency oversight board of Yolo County. This is the, the oversight board that's taken over all the post-redevelopment activity on behalf of all four cities and the county. So they're members of the community, all those communities and the taxing entities that are participating. Thanks to Supervisor Ruxroad, I am now the chair of that committee. So my legacy of being the wind-down person of redevelopment activities continues. And so, we had an overview, a very good overview by the staffs of all the cities. Paul was there. Thank you, Paul, for representing West SAC very well in our activities. But all the cities represented kind of were there in their lifetime of dealing with redevelopment. And we scheduled a meeting, which is probably where we're going to go, about, at least have a one, a minimum one meeting a year, which would be in January, to approve all the ROPS that are coming through and all the other actions. So, that's the one report from that agency. I also did want to take a mention, and I don't see him here, is the chief here today? I brought this up, and I was hoping Sergeant Roger Kenny would be here today. He sits in the chair over there. But we saw that he is retiring as of tomorrow. And so, I'm sorry he's not here tonight to hear this. Hopefully, he's maybe watching, maybe not at home.
I'm sure he's watching this meeting.
But if, I wanted to recognize, he's been sitting in a chair for some time, watching over us and making sure we have order and listening intently to our debate. But more importantly, Sergeant Kenny has been the face of our community, representing some very good work by the police force on our community relations. And also, he's been on point for some very troubling incidents we've had over the last few years, ones that really tested us. And so, if our friends and the police force can pass on our dearest thanks and best wishes to him, he's done an outstanding job. He's been an outstanding representative of our community, and just wanted to appreciate, appreciate all he's done and recognize him and wish him well.
That's all I have here. All right, thank you. Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. And I couldn't have said that better, councilmember. Mayor Protemla Desma, upon joining this council, I had the great opportunity of working with Sergeant Kenny, and he took me on my first ride along here in the city. And, you know, the job of being a public information officer is no joke. You know, calls at any time of the night and having to have grace in times of chaos. And Sergeant Kenny has handled that exceptionally well. So it's, it's a great loss to our city to lose him to great retirement, but please express our appreciation for all of his hard work. Councilmember Sandine did the report on city-county two-by-two, so my report is limited to the Yolo County Children's Alliance tonight. We've had a busy month. On Monday, August 20th, I accompanied Katie Viegas, the executive director, as well as staff, to meet with AT&amp;T representatives who presented a check for $20,000 to support the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act projects that Yolo County Children's Alliance is engaged in. And we did so at Lenisa's Cafe on Jefferson Boulevard, largely because Lenisa's Cafe was the first employer to take on one of the, the children, one of the kids who was being sponsored under the act. For those of you who aren't familiar with the IOA or the Innovation Act, it's, it assists in workforce innovation to strengthen and help people with, who have maybe traditional barriers to employment, and people who are useful in making sure they get job training skills. It's good for the employer, it's good for the kids. And YCCA has taken the lead in our community in making sure that opportunities are available with its grants. So thank you to AT&amp;T. In addition, this upcoming Monday, I'll be on the ball field at Rayleigh Field to accept a $2,000 check from the River Cats Foundation. So if you have a free night on Monday, come on, cheer us on. That's additional money that will be poured back into our county and to our children. Yolo County Children's Alliance also completed its annual backpack drive, and we had a wonderful effort, and I have to commend our community for, for stepping up. A group of volunteers stayed in the sale-in parking lot for a full day to collect resources, including backpacks and school supplies. As a result, Yolo County Children's Alliance was able to give out 850 fully stocked backpacks to kids in our community so they could start the school year on the right foot. Finally, this Friday, the 24th, the Yolo County Children's Alliance will be hosting its annual fundraiser at Bogle Vineyards. It is an event that you should not miss, and if anybody is interested out in the community who's watching at home, look at yolokids.com and get all the information, excuse me, yolokids.org, and you could find more information. I will say that there is a council member here on the dais who will be playing in a band that evening for that effort, councilmember, Mayor Protemla Desma, as well as our Parks and Recs directors, Cindy Tuttle. So thank you, and that's it for me.
No, I'm not singing, there's a preview, so. No one was asking. All right, thank you. And a couple of reports, the Sacramento area council of governments, that the most recent board meeting, the board approved minor modification to our, our regular Transportation Development Act claims, our, our regular claims about just under $3 million for, for bus, bus service, bus operations, shelter maintenance, the via service and others, mobility action plan. We needed to make a minor change, that was approved by the, by the board at its most recent meeting. The week prior, the Strategic Planning Committee meeting for, for SECOG occurred, that meets twice a year. We received a request, a proposal by Valley Vision, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Sacramento Metro Chamber, and Region Builders to convene a regional economic prosperity planning process. And sort of following on the work of the Brookings Collaboration that many of those organizations in SECOG also participated in. And so, I came to the Strategic Planning Committee for the purpose of beginning to scope that work out, leading, building off what happened at the Regional Futures Forum that Councilmember Sandine and others attended as well. I, I was in typical West Sacramento mode, pushing for, you know, real deliverables, what are we actually going to accomplish with this? Are we, are we just going to collaborate, as we have on this topic many, many, many? We have, the road is littered with regional economic prosperity plans that don't execute themselves. And so, what are we, really focus on what are we going to deliver in terms of real economic development, real prosperity, real inclusive development, all of the things that are important in our own community and our region. So we'll, we'll be getting a scope of work on that project soon, which we'll share with the council as well for, for any additional feedback or comments on it. I also attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors Automation Task Force Meeting in South Bend, Indiana, for a day. This is a task force that is, is trying to get ahead of, well, maybe not get ahead, but not to, fall too far behind, some of the implications of automation for cities. That includes the workforce issues that are definitely a priority here in our community because we have so many local residents that work in industries that are, have been identified as some of the most vulnerable for automation, truck driving being one of the most, the most prominent examples, but we have many, many, because of the predominance of industrial factory warehousing and, and other professions like paralegals, for example, in our, in our city, automation is a significant potential threat to the, to workforce and to family stability in the community. So we're looking at, at, at those issues and how cities, what are some best practices that we can either learn from or start in that space to provide a, a transition for folks into, into even better employment? So that was, that's one theme. The second theme is for cities themselves as consumers of, of automation, you know, how, how can we be more efficient at the work that we're doing, provide better, more customized, more effective services for our community using, you know, the opportunities that automation creates? And then kind of, in the larger picture, long-term, that, you know, some of these future work in automation questions are also raising issues around what opportunities might there be, to the extent to which the workday changes or other things that create more opportunities for folks to become involved in communities? If you were to design an automation, more automation-heavy world in terms of what you would like it to accomplish for communities and for cities, what might that be? So this is a, this was the very first field meeting of the, of the task force. It's led by the mayor of South Bend, Indiana, who's a brilliant millennial who's, who's leading this work. But I participate mainly in, for the expertise on workforce development based on what we're doing here in the city, but hope to have more to report back in terms of action items for us into the future. Then finally, the Streetcar Policy Committee, or, I'm sorry, the Streetcar Joint Powers Authority Board met at the beginning of the month as well. And Councilmember Johannes, Mayor Protemla Desma, and I were all present at that meeting. And just as a status report on the project, the city of Sacramento, as we have also, have approved all of the necessary governance agreements and other related documents and instruments. The advanced spending authority for, for funds that have already been budgeted pursuant to the Sacramento funds or pursuant to our vote or approved, measure monies as well on behalf of the project. The federal government, the FTA was out here about a month and a half ago for the purpose of conducting its risk assessment. This is a required part of the 700-step process at the federal level for, for releasing the fund that the Congress and the President have already authorized. And I think they identified 24 areas in the risk assessment, or something in that range, all of which we had anticipated, none of which had to do with the structure of our governance for, for Streetcar itself. And in that process, apparently, we, they took, they said to our, our staff team on behalf of the Streetcar Project that, look, you, the money's guaranteed to the project, don't worry about it, just keep making progress towards its execution. And so, we're proceeding in that regard. We also reviewed the RFP for the vehicle procurement. That process is going to begin very shortly as well, so making steady progress on that issue. There is one policy issue that we will continue to grapple with subtly, but, but strong, but forcefully inside that process, which is the nature of how each city and RT are billing the project for staff time. And there's been a bit of asymmetry in the approach to, that the two cities have taken to how to bill for staff time. And if we were to both bill the way one of the two cities that isn't on the west side of the river has been billing, we would consume a large proportion of the budget for staff time instead of for the actual project. And it's not that we would go way over budget. So we're keeping an eye on that. We raised it at the committee as well, and I think we received assurances that we'll continue to work, we'll, we'll resolve that. But thanks to Art, to Denix and to his team for, you know, for staying on that at the staff level and then for making sure that we were, were well briefed in order to advocate for West SAC at the committee meeting as well. So with that, oh, yes, Councilmember Sandine?
I just wanted to take a moment to go, circle back to the Yolo County Children's Alliance. And Councilmember Roscoe and two of our West Washington Unified School District Board trustee members did a lot to garner all the donations. And I just wanted to commend our colleague for her, her efforts. It was hundreds of kids who didn't have the school supplies that then had them. So I want to thank you and also take a moment, we have a couple, the owners of Grocery Out that are here with us tonight for another item, but they also donated all the, the hot dogs and all the, for, to make that festival and kind of pick up a really festive occasion. So I, I want to take a moment to also publicly thank them for their generosity to the community. Thanks.
And she won't say it, but I think the other, you know, one of the, one of the central ideas of that, of that, of that drive, of the school supplies drive, wasn't, it was, it was mainly to provide school supplies for, for, for families and for kids that otherwise wouldn't have them, but also to, to, to help give families an opportunity to, to show their kid, their own kids who may have, may already have plenty of supplies, how and the value of giving and serving and building a culture of, of caring and philanthropy in the community. And so, both, both extraordinarily were, extraordinarily worthy objectives for the community. So thanks for leaving that. And while we're thanking people, just two others. National Night Out has occurred since our last council meeting, so again, kudos to the West Sacramento Police Department. All the departments have participated, but it's led by the police department. It was a, a tough, tough context. As usual, it was about 127 degrees outside, but not as usual, with, the, the air quality was, was, was pretty marginal, legally marginal, I think. And the turnout and the enthusiasm in each of the neighborhoods was, was, was unaffected. It was a really, really exciting and popular event and really important time for neighbors to come together and to support each other and also to look out for each other. So thanks and congratulations to the department. And then, you know, we, I think several of us were at the opening for the Lighthouse Charter School, which was a major accomplishment for a lot of folks in the community who had put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears and sweat equity into making that project happen. And they really acknowledged also, I see Randy Goodwin is here, you know, our staff for helping to make a project that was impossible and had 1,000 things thrown in its way over, over the last five years come to reality. And it was a really joyous day as well. And so, thanks to the, to our, to our staff team and all the departments that helped to make that possible. All right, item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, and we have none this evening, so we'll proceed to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 18. The city manager has a memo at your, at councilmembers' desks with minor revisions to item 6 with respect to the contract for the, for, the signature by, by the mayor for the contract under, under item 6. The, the memo also includes attachment 2 to item 8, and, and then also recommends deletion of recommended action number 5 on agenda item 13. So with those changes, the consent is before us. So are there any items to remove or any items for separate question or comment?
14 and 16, please.
All right, I had 11 and 16, oh, and 15.
And 15?
15, yeah. Okay, so item 11 is consideration of resolution 18-54 approving a capital improvement program budget amendment to the Washington District Sustainable Community Infrastructure Project for fiscal year 1819. So, my, my question is on the, the funding of the additional work. So as, as, as I understand from the staff report, this is additional money, additional money for paving that is required because we've, looking at one of the oldest parts of the city, we've discovered stuff under the ground that is, and more trenches that have been required and crisscrossing whatever, so it's just added to the cost?
Mayor, that is correct. I'm Edgar Medina with the Public Works Department. Yes, this additional funding is to augment the additional paving that we want to do, especially on E Street. So part of the project did not originally have a waterline component along that street, so we added that as part of the project to replace an aging infrastructure that wasn't originally scoped. So part of that actually added several waterline connection trenches. So what this additional budget, budget is going to actually pave, do an overlay on E Street to kind of hide all the trenches that we've, we've dug, as well as kind of supplement some other areas that need some additional paving.
So I get, so my, the question that raised for me was, why is Measure G then being charged for the full cost of that additional paving and not at least a portion of it being charged to the water fund?
Mayor, that's a good question. We met with Finance Department and our Economic Development and came up with a recommended fund. I wouldn't be able to, to answer that question at this moment, but maybe somebody from Finance could rescue you.
Well, there's Roberta.
I, I actually cannot say anything on this. I, I believe our budget manager was involved in that conversation and came up with the, the recommendation. I don't know if the city manager has additional information with that?
Excuse me. I, I don't have any specifics on the, you know, the status of the funding, but I will say that the, the project already included water and sewer funding allocations that were tied to other improvements within it. So I get the question, why, if it was a water-related expense, why was it not looked at in the water and sewer fund? We could go back and look to see if there were, if it was a, if it was a resource availability problem, maybe there weren't enough funds in those budgets. But now, I will say on Measure G, that is the primary sort of gap funding source for this project. In terms of the spirit of Measure G, what it's supposed to do, we have done other investments that, that included both paving and underground utility infrastructure. So at least in terms of the appropriateness of the funding source, there is that, but in terms of the availability of the other ones, I can't speak to the exact balances.
Yeah, we're, we're like super hawks on making sure that, that, that the voter-approved money for the voter-approved purposes is spent in voter-approved, in the voter-approved ways. And I, I, I don't, there's, I don't think there's any question that it's a, it's a legally appropriate cost for Measure G, but it's not an appropriate cost for Measure G if there's another, Measure, Measure G should be the final, the final backstop, not, not, not supplanting other funding that, that should be devoted to this purpose. So I, I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but it is the, I just, as a, as a budget, as a budget approach, measure, it, I mean, even though, knowing that you have a Measure G backstop should not cause us to be any less hawk-like in looking for every other penny for the, for the project. And so if it was a water, a series of water pieces, I think we, for me at least, I want to know, we exhausted all of the opportunities in those, those areas before going to the limited funds that are in Measure G.
So if I could on this, I understand there's probably a sense of urgency with the, the budget to complete the project here, but what we could do is look to those other funds and see if there's a way to adjust the budget, you know, going forward and bring that back if, if there are more appropriate funds available for that additional contingency amount. And maybe Edgar can speak to that option.
Mayor, city manager, yes, absolutely. There is a, there is a certain urgency, but we do have some flexibility to come back with a more appropriate fund if that's, if that's what the council chooses.
Well, can we, can we appropriate, can we appropriate tonight from either fund and if it's not there? Right.
I can't speak to the availability funds. In the other funds, I, I think we can certainly look at it, come up with an appropriate allocation and bring it back to you at the next council meeting.
Well, I'm just trying to avoid coming back to us at the next council meeting. I mean, can we, can we make an appropriation from either of the two funds, subject to the determination, the, the determination by the city manager, the sufficient funds are available in the water fund?
Yes, with the, with what I understand to be the direction that that's the council's preferred.
Right, source. Mr. Measure G, does that?
Yeah, it works.
Okay. Okay, so we'll come back to this and to the final, final agenda item. Okay, item 14 is the consideration of an update on the pilot on-demand rideshare service. Mr. Mayor Protemla Desma.
Thank you. Just a couple of points that, hi Sarah, how are you? First of all, just thanks for the update and, you know, anecdotally, I'm hearing very positive things about the service, and you were able to provide some. positive things about the service and you're able to provide some real numbers around who's using, using it and from 125 users who applied for and received a senior disabled rider discount. And then so a couple of areas, though, I'm interested in and kind of maybe furthering, looking at further in that area is just, do, do we have, I know you have a, I'm interested in sort of what the, because you noticed, I know that there's a customer service scoring system. I think, I think it's at the end of the app, you can rate the ride. I, I just want to see if there's a breakdown on any differences, whether they phoned in or they use the app. We already see, I mean, how, how did phone users able to get a customer service rating?
Yeah, so people who call and book their ride by phone don't have the option of doing a star rating the way that you do using the smartphone app.
Right, obviously.
But we have been receiving a lot of feedback. There's multiple ways that it's coming in through the website for the project, through West Sac Connect. I've received some direct emails and then through via support line. And they can also text if they have just a regular cell phone.
Okay, if there's some way to off, you know, write a memo, update, supplement to this, just to kind of give us a sense of that feedback, I think that's an important part of the ridership that we've seen. And just to share that I've seen VIA out in the community, they were out this past, it was this past Saturday, right? They were out this past Saturday at the Chambers, Third Saturday Swarm, very present and visible to, to the community. So I'd urge VIA and the users to continue, and their riders, I'm sorry, their drivers to be very present at those events. I think that's the way to kind of get the word out and continue to build interest. But the trends look pretty good so far. I mean, ridership is up and the, the customer service stuff was really good, except I can't see that, that, that one population.
Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Yeah, I'm hearing a lot of good things about you in the community, so you're doing a great job, I think, on this project. Do we have any way to identify and repeat uses of this particular program? So to compare one-time uses versus someone who's kind of relying, is really relying on this as a mode?
Yeah, I believe the answer to that is yes. I'm being provided with tables of kind of individual ride data and they have unique user IDs, so it's anonymized, but it's not aggregated in an easy, you know, visual way right now, so I can work with VIA if that's something you guys would like, fold it into the dashboard in the regular reports and see if that's possible.
Yeah, I think, you know, just if we're looking at this as a viable, you know, long-term solution for the short rides to, to really know how, what the adoption rates and how, how people stick with it.
Absolutely.
And also maybe age stratification as well on that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. I remember when you first presented and, you know, there were some skepticism from folks that weren't familiar with the, the mode, but this is very innovative. And since then, I have been nothing but impressed. And in addition to the anecdotal evidence that, you know, just hearing people and, and seeing posts on, on social media, I've been particularly impressed with VIA's willingness to reconsider its pricing and policies to accommodate our demographic here based on feedback. But in addition, not only have they done so, they, they've been a wonderful community partner. So not only were they present at the Third Saturday Swarm, they offered a prize of 100 free VIA rides for people so they could visit local businesses in our community. In addition to that, I understand they're going to be participating in our Mediterranean Food Festival, offering $1 rides to residents so they could attend. That to me is, is more important than anything, just tying our community together and giving them opportunities for mobility that they otherwise wouldn't have. Thank you.
All right, I completely agree. I think one of the, one of the, the, the good and the challenging things of a pilot is that everyone has to change it while it's in process. And we want to get it better, but we also, we also have to evaluate it. And it's very hard to evaluate a constantly changing project. But I guess my, my, the only, the only worry I had about some of the changes that we're making, my, the feedback I'm getting is, is all, everything that folks have said. But the top line is always, when am I going to be able to go to Sacramento? And Sac, that's a huge lift to get the service to run over to Sacramento for financial reasons, for operational reasons and for governmental jurisdiction reasons. So it is, it is, it is not a tomorrow thing. But I just, I want to be careful that we don't make all the little changes that only cost $5 here and $5 there and not have, and then, and then a year from now, if we are able to make the Sacramento option work and we need $100, we spend it all on the small things. Because that's by far the number one thing for folks who want to get to Kaiser or, you know, to where, or to, or to Golden One or whatever. And so we need to be, we need to essentially budget the, our capacity to make changes in the service over time with our eye on the prize towards the big things like Sacramento service, Sunday service, you know, actually being able to stay till the end of a River Cats game service. If there's, you know, those sorts of things in addition to the ones that are being made. So I, I, the ones that have been happening, I think are great, but we are, we also want to be, I want, I think we need to be careful not to create an expectation that every single week it's going to, it's going to get, it's going to get cheaper, it's going to go farther, whatever. We have to have a service that we can evaluate and we also have to make sure that at the end of the line, the find, the economics of it will work at scale, both for VIA as a company and us as a, as a, as a governmental agency and to, to, to deliver the, the next generation of service that I know people are, people are excited about because they can see the future of it as well. So I, but I, so I completely agree, great job, both for you and your colleagues in the City Hall and for, and for, for VIA itself. I know you're also watching, because we don't know, VIA's a private company and they are also testing their own model here in Arlington and other places. And so we are, we're building the VIA brand, but we are also, we are, we're also having to learn, we are, part of this is learning how to develop and regulate and manage and deploy the service, because we might end up with a new partner in a year and a half from now. And, and it's one of the reasons why VIA's efforts in the community are a great sign. But, you know, I think my experience having with, with Uber, Bajump was you, you got to be prepared in this, in this marketplace for radical changes in the, in, in the market right away. And so we can't lock ourselves completely into one partner until we know that both they and we have a long-term deal.
Just a couple of things on that. And just to piggyback off that thought about how it's changing and when it's done, it, it is already starting to change the conversation of VIA or on-demand service. It's changed the conversations we're having at YCTD because it's, they're seeing already the impacts of it. So for instance, we have very difficult transit accessibility in, in Knights Landing area, there's always service there. So actually, this has spurred the transit district to look at possibly micro-transit that serves them, because it maybe it's more affordable, maybe it's more efficient. So again, without this, it doesn't spur that. And so my, my, my other ask is, as a follow-up is, any opportunities, I know at the beginning of this, we talked about YCTD promotions to use the bus service if they're leveraging that, to be able to ride VIA to the transit station across the state, across the street and take Yolo buses to the city. Now's the time to sort of utilize that. I, I'm not sure YCT is still there, they're interested in that and looking at that, but if it's not there, we can make that happen. I think that would be a good message, too. Because I saw the note in here, there's a lot of people that are being dropped off right at Rayleigh Field and grabbing a bike. And we did that this past weekend, where we were able to grab a bike, jump bike from there. People are walking across the bridge. So again, a Yolo bus is another option, and I know we had talked about that. I'd like to see if we can follow through on that.
Yeah, on that point, do you know, as the data, both the data and anonymizing and data warehousing, you know, offsite, is, are the, are the, are we or in our partnerships with Segar and others, working on ways to do, do data on the linked trips of this nature? So, you know, so if, if, if Yolo bus, if, if Jump, for example, knows that, based on his account number, that, you know, he picked up a bike at, at the, at a particular location and VIA knows that that same customer took a ride there on an anonymized basis to the, to UC Berkeley, to the Evaluation Center, for, for example, is it possible for those kinds of trips? I know it isn't, it hasn't been, but will it be possible for us to be able to start seeing some of those linkages?
I hope so. It's something that I have raised internally and with VIA. We have the data at the granularity that we need on our end. And I think in kind of matching up locations, because we have lat-long data, but being able to get coordination from Uber and Jump would be the other piece of it. And that's where I think there's a little bit more uncertainty, especially given that there's a little bit of competitiveness between those two companies now.
Is, might there be a possibility with, in, in the, in the VIA system connecting to folks who have, who have purchased a YCT, YCTD pass, for example, bus, monthly pass, for example, as opposed to each ride? Because when you, if you're putting coins in the thing or whatever, we can't really check that data. But is it possible to, to in the VIA system, have keyed, you know, just sort of sharing an agreement that where the, again, the names are invisible to any external users, to be able to link that information at least? So we know whether it is a bus rider, basically, a regular bus rider that is using VIA to get to there?
I'll, I'll look into that a little bit more. I think we've had, YCTD has said that getting data off the connect card, it's actually kind of lost some granularity in some ways, but that's something I'll have to follow up on.
Yeah. While it's on my mind, Sarah, just one more ask. I was asked about state employees are sometimes given dollars for use for transit, for mass transit. So I've been asked if there's, if that's an opportunity, they can't use it on VIA as it is for whatever reason, can't accept that card or... So again, is it something if, maybe you can follow up on separately?
Both, both state, but also private employers that, who, you know, that provide a tax, you know, tax benefited, benefit for, for bicycling and for transit? I don't even, I don't know whether these services are.
VIA should qualify. It's based on the passenger capacity and it, it should qualify as part of a commuter benefit program.
Okay. Thank you.
Good update, thank you.
Item 15 then is consideration of response to, oh no, sorry, let's skip that one. Item 16 is a consideration of approval of letter of public convenience and necessity for the Grocery Outlet Incorporated. Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, I just had a couple of comments on this one first. It's to, thanks to the owners, the Grocery Outlet who are here today, work and the police on working with them over the week to kind of get everybody settled, I think, on understanding where the EBC license issue is. I think, appreciate your efforts and your outreach to them and making sure they understood. I do, so, and as well, I was going to bring up, Grocery Outlet has been friends of the Grocery Outlet, have been great supporters in the community and done a terrific job at the store. And so we want to support them and where they're going, and I'm supportive of this. But what I've learned in this process is the, the issues the police force have in the general area vicinity that the EBC was really concerned about and that's our police force. And I'm, that are really sort of related to this in terms of how the store owners and I'm sure there will be other store owners. Local craft beer is an important part of who we are and what we want to do. And I think that's where the store owners wanted to be able to provide. We understand where the permit limitations are, but are there, I, I really would like the city to start looking at other tools, because to me, that there's, there's existing problems of the saturation of the licenses there, the single-serve beers that we, I understand are causing problems in some of the liquor, liquor stores in the areas. And I think there's, is, what I want to explore, there are policy, other policy ways that we can address this, because, you know, and, you know, it's just, it's just about, we have a, we have a problem in saturation and there are other ways to address that. So when good purveyors come along and want to do the right thing, just because they're last in, they're kind of punished for the sins of others.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, if I could address that. This particular item, I think we, there's no change to the staff recommendation for, for this item. However, it did prompt us to look at this issue, the issue you just raised, on a more global level of the city, looking across the state of California. Our city manager and police department, through some quick research, have identified what some other cities have done through an ordinance and working with EBC. So it's something we're going to take a look at and on a longer-term basis to address the conflict between the, the EBC regulations and, like you said, allowing, you know, responsible and, and, you know, the, the types of uses like grocery stores to be able to sell craft beer, given that we have the three breweries in town, and it's something that we're, we're trying to support. So, so it's a longer-term strategy that we have and we are exploring what other cities have done, also working with the city attorney, and we'll be back with that at a later date.
The, but the, if I could just follow up, so on the, I mean, there's the, there's the, 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 the beer and liquor itself, and then there's also the context of the location, and they, they have independent effects on the neighborhood and on bad behavior. And it seems that in the long run, it's in the, it's in the interest of both that, the neighborhood and the community, that more of the alcohol purchases are in establishments like, like a Rayleigh's or Grocery Outlet, right, that, that, that do not provide the opportunities for all the other associated bad activities. So it is, it's not just that they need to be treated at, you know, the same as, as some of the, some of the problematic liquor stores, but we actually want, you know, it's, it's in the public interest to be shifting the demand more towards those locations. And so I, I'm just curious why we, why we, in terms of the conditions, it's necessary to, to require all these, unless we're already experiencing problems or issues at the, at the quote-unquote "regular grocery stores" in, in this regard? Because the craft beer issue is, that was the, that was the biggest one that popped out of my, but once I, once I looked at that, well, why, why, is there, has there been an issue there that, that ought to, that ought to require them to participate in our Together When Achieves More program? We can make them, but, but why are we doing that if we want to, if ultimately we want, we want clean, safe, secure places where, you know, where there's lots of eyes and whatever there, if, if, if it's in our interest as, as neighborhoods to have folks buying their alcohol in more, in places like that, why wouldn't we want to make it more incentivized?
Let me take an attempt at answering, I think, parts of those. So as far as the, the request for the participation in the police department team program, I think that's as much about creating partnership and resources as anything, is so we have that dialogue, we have that face-to-face relationship with any of the business operators in our city. As far as the stipulations that may actually appear to get in the way currently of producing more of that economic development in what is determined to be from a policy level, the right type of establishments, what we find in consulting with EBC is some difficulty in trying to avail that to some and not others, especially when it comes to the specific types and quantity of single container beverages. It's just a hurdle that they advise that we, we don't go down that road because it's not enforceable, according to them. But I think there are other things developmentally that we're looking at, both as a city and I think even from the private business standpoint, that may, may avail some opportunities for us to, to explore and at least analyze this current set of requirements that we're, we're issuing, because I think arguably, we could look at those from the standpoint of just needing to be reevaluated, because they have been sort of a standard practice for some time.
Okay. Thanks.
So based on that, that's something the city, you are looking at and...
Yes, and a longer-term basis, we're looking at an ordinance approach and we'll, you know, bring it back and when we have more research done on it, we think there's a long-term solution to address this concern.
Okay. Further on that, then we have before us the consent agenda, items two through 18, with the modifications to item six and thir, well, six, eight and 13?
And 11.
And 11, yes, thank you.
I'll move the recommended action.
It's moved to second, it's, you know, further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item 19 then is consideration of, of an approval of contract with Downtown Streets Incorporated and adoption of resolution 18-53 approving appropriation from the Measure E fund.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here this evening to request approval of a contract with Downtown Streets Incorporated and adopt resolution 18-53 for a pilot work experience program that will serve homeless and at-risk individuals in West Sacramento. In April of this year, staff conducted a workshop on the proposed Downtown Streets program, where homeless participants become a part of the team that carries out community beautification projects, maintenance activities in exchange for receiving case management, employment assistance services and financial rewards in the form of stipends or gift cards for basic, basic needs. The proposed contract is a, for a one-year term at a cost of $200,000. Resolution 18-53 appropriate to Measure E funds to cover the cost of the contract. If approved, program activities will include tasks such as garbage and debris, pickup, graffiti removal, and even assisting with cleanup of homeless encampments. and even assisting with cleanup of homeless encampments. The West Sacramento team would consist of approximately twelve to fifteen homeless members at one time and up to fifty individuals over the term of the, the one-year contract. Participants would be required to complete an application demonstrating their connection to West Sacramento, which would be confirmed by the city's homeless coordinator through an interview process. Specific focus areas selected for the program include the West Capitol Avenue corridor, parts of Jefferson Boulevard, and along the Rebel Walk Trail. Downtown Streets will be providing monthly data reports to city staff on the effectiveness of the program, which will include, among other things, number of active members, number of volunteer hours performed by team members, amount of debris and needles removed from each project area, and number of team members who have moved into housing, employment, or gained some other form of shelter. As part of the contract, Downtown Streets will be required to integrate collected data with Outreach Grid. And city staff will be using Send City platform to evaluate the positive and negative discourse of the program on social media. Lastly, during the term of the program, staff will be examining the creation of a Property and Business Improvement District, or P-Bid, as a possible source for long-term funding of the Downtown Streets program, if that is something that the council wishes to continue, and to fund other enhancement activities. This includes my presentation. David, Rachel Davidson from Downtown Streets, Mark Sawyer, our homeless coordinator, and myself are available to answer any questions from the council.
Are there questions at this time? Councilmember Roscoe, did you want to make any comments?
I do.
We did, we did one request to speak from Ms. Davidson as well, so... Either... Yeah, she's here.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. I wanted to take a brief moment to introduce all of you to two gentlemen who are both residents of West Sacramento. They were both direct referrals from Mark Sawyer to myself. As we anticipated, the launch of a program here in West Sacramento, we wanted to kind of get a foot ahead and be able to start working with some of the folks here who were seeking services with Downtown Streets team. So Mel and Matt, if you wouldn't mind just identifying yourselves with a wave. Both Mel and Matt came to us and joined our team in Sacramento earlier this month so that they could begin training and preparation to be our very first team members here in West Sacramento. So I just wanted to give a nod to both of them and introduce all of you to two folks who, if this contract is approved this evening, will be our first West Sacramento Downtown Streets team members.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so then, that's all the public comments we had. So, Ms. Roscoe?
Thank you. Two years ago, I decided to enter my name as a potential candidate on the city council. And as I reflect upon that decision, I remember that there were a few feelings that I had back then. I reflect upon the hope, the respect for my community that I, I wanted to mirror through my decision-making, as well as what type of contribution I could give as, as a council member. And those three things, hope, respect, and contribution, I, I would say that those are in the hearts of every West Sacramento resident. But even more so, those West Sacramento residents who find themselves in a situation where they're unexpectedly homeless. As part of that campaign, I knocked on doors along with fellow councilmember Sandine, and I asked members of the public to make an investment to reduce the impacts of homelessness, as well as reduce homelessness through Measure E. To tax themselves so that we would have resources to make a difference to the, to the community. Not only the homeless individuals in our community, but also the property owners, the residents, the families who experienced on a daily basis the impacts and the inconveniences. In doing so, I later found a program, that came across a program that I felt addressed both of those things, and met Rachel Davidson and took a trip over to San Jose to witness this inaction. And that was the Downtown Streets Team San Jose program. Upon arriving into the gymnasium, it was a church, I believe, I, I saw lots of people mulling around, a lot of noise, lots of joy. But I can't really explain the feeling. It was just remarkable. It was hope, respect, and contribution, all in one room. And I thought to myself, if there's one contribution I could bring to West Sacramento, it has to be this. Downtown Streets Team contributes to the reduction of homelessness in providing an opportunity for folks to come forward and beautify their community. And in exchange for a valuable consideration, be it gift cards, or vouchers for their phones, or even housing vouchers, they have an opportunity for upward mobility. In addition, in the process, they get a chance to engage in acquiring leadership skills and work experience skills and just have an opportunity to reintegrate into the community and take pride in the opportunity and dignity of work. In the process, as a beautifier community, our community sees less litter. As you heard earlier, the possibility of reducing undesirable items such as hypodermic needles that might exist and where residents might come across. Perhaps a person that might be asleep on a business doorstep, or someone's home, or local business or underpass. And maybe even the presence of someone sleeping under an underpass because they have a voucher that will allow them to stay in a warm place for an evening. But the reason I really wanted this program for West Sacramento was because of the impacts of the program on its participants. It's a vehicle for opportunity, a vehicle for hope, a vehicle for respect, a vehicle for contribution. And what I saw was a group of people who were self-selected and self-motivated to change their lives, and they were excited about being there. They had the opportunity to take control of their lives and gain the respect of peers and become visible for once. I once heard that the hardest thing about being homeless isn't actually being homeless, but being ignored, being invisible. And what you saw was people wearing these visible shirts, and I see two of them here in the room today, say Downtown Streets Team. And it made folks identifiable and associated with something very positive, something that people approve of. And then, as a result, you would see folks in the community who would say, "Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing," which has the most positive externality on the person doing the work because finally, they are getting the respect. But in addition to that, it's the God's opportunity to, to contribute, to have self-efficacy and of mattering. And another externality being what I heard one Downtown Streets Team member say. And she said that she would go out into the encampments and clean up. But now, they're cleaner than they were before because it's her friends who refuse to now drop their items for her to clean up after them. So it was almost a self-policing mechanism. That was a surprise, but a pleasant one. I truly hope that, in the spirit, the true spirit of West Sacramento, that we invite this program and embrace it and welcome our team members. And that we say thanks and express our gratitude. There's a feeling that can't be manufactured, and I'm really excited that West Sacramento has the opportunity to enjoy the possible, the organic feeling that this program brings. And I've seen it in several different locations, and I'm really excited for West Sacramento. I want to thank Mark Sawyer, who isn't here. Is he here today? There you are. Thank you. Mark, your talents and your passion and your dedication to the work you do has been unparalleled in my experience, and it is a pleasure to have you on this team here in West Sacramento. I'd also like to thank our city manager, who took a trip over to the Sacramento Downtown Streets Team program and saw for himself what that looked like in person. Our, our new city manager has brilliance and optimism and bold ambition. And they say, "Sky's the limit," but he has his own personal sky because he just goes after everything without restraint, and I, I like that. And then there's Rachel Davidson, and the, the best quote I, I heard through this whole process was, "Does she come with the program?" She's amazing. I think the Downtown Streets Team pilot will reflect all of what's great about West Sacramento and be a West Sacramento that I believe in and I take pride in. So it would be my greatest honor to move this item and ask for the council's support for Downtown Streets Team pilot.
Mr. Johannesen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the, I'm, I'm supportive of this, this item. It's homelessness and trying to help the folks that are in need is just, it's such a huge problem, and I don't think anyone has the one solution. There are a number of things that have, have to happen to help resolve the problem, and this is certainly a really good example of a program that works. At least, we've seen that it works, and I'm really looking forward to, well, actually, I'm not gonna be here, but I, I can see that this, the effect this has had in other cities. And I really like to commend Councilwoman Roscoe for taking this on. It's, the thing about homelessness is it's, there's no real, I mean, you have markers of success, but you're, it's not something you're gonna be able to solve overnight. So it really takes someone that has political fortitude to take on this kind of issue because it's, you get a lot of flack, you kind of get to be a fo-, focus for, you know, that, that, that issue. But, you know, it's God's work, and I'm glad, really glad that you're moving this item forward.
Councilmember Sandine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too want to thank and commend Councilmember Roscoe for her passion and her compassion and for bringing this forward. As you mentioned, and has come before us, it's, it provides leadership and job training, work experience, and, and connects folks to social services as well, or, you know, make sure that, 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 that our city is kind of putting people into the pipeline for this program. And the beautification of our city, I think, is a huge plus with this program as well. So that's just, it's like win-win. The other thing for me that's important is looking at the budget and looking at how, if this pilot is successful, and hope, we're all hoping that it is, how we make it continue beyond. Important, important thing to me is that third of the budget is stipends to participants. So it's not just on necessarily on all the program costs itself. It actually is, is tangible to the folks that are participating. Another thing for me is that, at the end of this year is looking at, but to me, the goals are more realistic, and I want to commend the team that worked on this to actually refine those goals. I think I questioned some of that, like, is this possible last time? And when I reread this kind of reworked proposal, it's much more, I think it's much more doable. I hope we exceed the goals, and I hope more folks are housed and employed at the, at the end of this, of course. But I think this is, this is realistic. And another important outcome for me is not increasing homelessness in West Sacramento, but reducing it. So I'm hoping that there's a way so that we can look at that and say that this was a large part of kind of changing or helping change things here. And so I too am supportive of this and excited that we'll be, hopefully, tonight, moving that, this forward.
Mayor Protem Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Roscoe, thank you for your leadership on this and taking on such a, a, a project with passion. And, and I agree with you, it's just, it's a passion that is, we've had. I was just kind of waiting for the right moment, this, or the right program, to, so embrace what I think the city has already started. You mentioned Mark and our police team, and Cindy has her group all working. The city has been addressing homelessness in its own ways, but this project is different. It's, it's bringing a different element of, of how we address homelessness and not one or the other, just sort of compliments, I think, and adding a different level of what we're doing in the, in the community to address this. And dress in a very human way, the people that are within it. And the word I, I, that was brought up is hope, it's bringing hope to the community around this. So, so thank you, and, and I'm supportive of this. I'm supportive of, 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 to step back on and leverage a little bit what Councilmember Sandine brought up, which is kind of the funding of this. And, and this is exactly what we had in mind, I think, when we drafted Measure E and started working on the policy, and how we were gonna watch the dollars. And the mayor brought up Measure G, which was how we handle infrastructure. We are hawkish on those things. And with this one, we were different because it was an undefined, we knew the areas we wanted to address. But we also knew we really needed to have outcomes and impact, and, and, we have real outcomes. We had to tie it to real performance. And so I look at the back of this staff report, which maybe not all of you have, is a very well-written proposal on how this meets the policy guidelines we've set forth as for Measure E. And I, I think the challenge in it is, well, let me step back to what, what it does. This, this will, very real thing for us in 2016, as we addressed Measure E, was not just reducing homelessness, but reducing the impacts of homelessness. We had in mind property owners and, and the, we were spending an enormous amount of money from our police force and our parks who were cleaning up camps. And, yeah, it, it, it brought to life our goat community, which is part of that effort, and I saw the...
Community.
Yeah. Who are out today, I saw. But it did, it was one of the real, this is what we had in mind, to be able to fund and expand upon what we were doing and bring real impacts, reduce the impacts of homelessness in our community. And, and this was, this is one in big scale, probably, you know, and the other element, we have some of the pavement plans, I think we'll talk about in a few, and, and the work we're doing already. But this, we wanted real results, and this is really tangible. And, and I think more so, yeah, well, it'll, it'll tangibly go clean up areas. It'll make sure that we reduce the impacts of it. And like Councilmember Sandine, I'm, I'm interested in outcome, if it actually helped reduce homelessness and give people a hope. So I'm really counting on city staff, police, Mark, you already are at work apparently, really embracing it. How can we institute this as part of the fabric of what we do? To give people not just the hope of being in the team and working better for the community, but giving them the services they need to continue to move down the line and get what they need and, and to provide that hope. So that's the dynamic I want to see at the end of this, to see how, how it's all integrating together. Because that will be the successful pilot, because I think Councilmember Sandine is right. If it is a successful pilot and it's doing all those things, then we got to figure, the, the next step is, okay, now how, how do we kind of keep this going? And that will be a challenge, but if the pilot works, then it, it, we have tangible, tangible evidence that it does work. It's, it's reducing, it's doing good, and has value in our community. So I'm really excited about this, to see how it takes off. And I just challenge everyone in the community to embrace it, to see how we can all help it. I, I saw in here, part of the funding is the Downtown Streets Teams, that they need to raise money. So... So whatever, you know, we can help individually by showing up at an event or doing whatever, that's another way to help that cause. So I'm super supportive of this and really interested to see how this progresses. Thank you.
I'm also supportive. There are five of us with different perspectives, I think reflecting, well, fifty-five, fifty thousand perspectives in the community on it. And so I've been very focused, and I know the council as a whole has as well, in making sure that we are bringing our compassion and our fiscal and operational prudence to the table simultaneously. And since Ms. Roscoe has brought enough passion for a hundred of us, let me pivot over to the other side and just associate myself to the maximum extent I can with everything that she said about what this means, because I'm also interested in it being sustainable and scalable. And for that to occur will require success on the dimensions of Measure E. And I mean, we all are in government, and it's very, it becomes very tempting in government to start to show performance metrics of, these many people were served, you know, this many, these many people went through our doors. Those are not the performance metrics in this program. If we just crush it in terms of the number of people served and the incidence of homelessness is not budged, and the impacts, as perceived in the community of homelessness, is not budged, we will have to move the money to spend in some other initiative that will have an attempt to do that. So it's really critical that the way we design the program and the metrics from the beginning reflect what we will be looking at when the pilot's over, and also what the public will be looking at. And so the two areas I wanted to kind of drill in on were, first, the metrics, and the second, on this, you know, this trope or real issue, depending on your perspective around attraction of folks from outside of the community, and there is one of those issues in this piece. So the, I do think it's important that in the scope from the very beginning, the Measure E, those two key phrases of Measure E that cannot be repeated enough, reduce the incidence of homelessness and reduce the impacts of homelessness on the community, be repeated in every single, but definitely at the beginning. And, you know, kind of what are the goals of the team? Since this is a city scope of services that we're adopting, the goals of the city, therefore the goals of the team in this particular case, are to reduce the incidence of homelessness and reduce the community impacts of homelessness. We care about homeless individuals in our community, but we could spend an unlimited amount of funds on well-being that we do not have, and it's not our core mission. That's the horrible part of the way the government is fragmented into different services. We have to focus on what our core mission is. And so it is essential that those elements from the very beginning be understood by everyone that's participating in the program, that that's how it's going to be evaluated. And then the same thing in the performance metrics at the end, which I think are really good, and the performance metrics do deal with the community impacts in very smart ways, looking at surveys of business owners and looking at the Zen City data as well. It's not as clear that the performance metrics are really going to give us good information about folks exiting homelessness, or fewer entering, or folks who are on the verge, are couch surfing, for example. So it is going to be important that the performance metric section, I think, be enhanced to deal with that question, because you're going, it will be absolutely essential that staff, Downtown Streets and staff be able to answer at the check-in points on this pilot, what are we seeing in terms of the impact on the incidence of homelessness? As Mr. Johannesen said, none of us are expecting that this program or any other program, any collection of five programs, will eliminate homelessness despite the ten-year plan that we have with the rest of the county. That's not the objective here, but we do want to make sure that at least we are not increasing, and to the extent that we are increasing income, employability, skills, pride, dignity, the sorts of things that lead, that are, that should be, you know, important determinants of being able to exit homelessness, that we see that, that we see that effect in the numbers, and that we don't simply get a number of client-served sorts of metrics, which are not going to meet the Measure E criteria as this program competes against other initiatives in the next round of Measure E allocation. So I think those two elements, we ought to be, you know, we ought to be inserting them into both the beginning and at the very end of the performance metrics. The other is, and I appreciated the approach taken here to deal with what we talked about when we kind of gave the green light conceptually to negotiate the contract, but I think they deserve a little bit of additional tweaking. And that is, the process of having our homeless coordinator, Mr. Sawyer, evaluate each of the applicants for, with respect to their West Sacramento affiliation, I thought that was a good solution in terms of trying to deal with that issue. The five criteria, though, I think are too, they're too broad in terms of what affiliation with West Sacramento means. Last permanent address was in West Sacramento, that is, that's a thoroughly sensible, that is, to me intuitively, like as a lay citizen, a West Sacramento, we're trying to serve West Sacramentoans who are experiencing homelessness, means people who lived in West, who had, who were not homeless, living in West Sacramento and have become homeless, and we're trying to serve them because we care about our neighbors and our family and friends and the folks working in the snack bar, what have you. And so your last permanent address being in West Sacramento seems like a very clear and very appropriate metric or indicator in that regard. The currently couch surfing or staying at a friend's or a family member's house in West Sacramento and have been doing so for at least a month, I see the case there in terms of the direct connection. I'm actually not so sure about the other three, and in part because I'm also looking ahead to if you come, if we succeed and we want to make the program permanent and/or scale it up with more team members, we're going to have to pay attention to the cost of it. And so eligibility being, including anyone who is currently receiving housing, shelter, outreach, or food services in West Sacramento, that is, folks who are in one of the motels placed there at the, through a voucher from Stanislaus County or what have you, that, for me, at least as a voter in the city, that's not what I was prepared to invest in, in terms of dealing with the homelessness of West Sacramentoans. So I, for me, I would not include that indicator or necessarily, you know, one or two of the others, because what we, the delicateness of this in terms of both its finances and its operations is also community support, and to the extent to which it appears, or it is the reality in the community, that a program is so successful and so well-promoted that folks decide to experience homelessness here as opposed to across the river or in woodland. And I know that's not, that is, is not appropriate to say among my left-leaning friends, and it's all my right-leaning friends say, but it is, both that view is important, and it's important that we don't stoke that fire. And so if we're talking about a very small Downtown Streets team to start with, and I think that the narrower criteria that really focuses on folks who are West Sacramentoans experiencing homelessness is important for the long-term fiscal and community support viability of the program at the pilot stage, we may determine as we proceed that, you know, an expanded eligibility makes sense and we can afford it and all of that. But I think at this initial stage, just as we have with VIA and our other pilots, that really focusing on those West Sacramentoans in our community who are experiencing homelessness and for whom community members want to be there for them and want to provide support and provide the kinds of amazing outcomes that Downtown Streets provides, that that's the appropriate starting point. So I just wanted to put that out there as a discussion point for the council.
Mr. Mayor and council, we can turn the circle back with Downtown Streets and fine-tune the participant criteria to reflect some of the issues that the mayor brought, so appreciate the comments.
So I was actually just putting, I mean, those are my points of view, but I wanted to, I was kind of putting it out to the council first before we asked staff to move forward in any particular direction. These are challenging issues, but in a context of a very hopeful approach, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be interested if it were appropriate to hear from Mr. Sawyer just about these, how what we have before us might work or not from his perspective, if that, that'd be great. Thanks.
Good evening, council.
Mayor. The one concern that you brought up, Mr. Mayor, you know, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't read it, but I think it was meant to be that someone receiving Yolo County Medi-Cal in conjunction with West Sacramento services. So I don't think it's going to be someone from Stanislaus County in the motel. That would, that person in the motel would have to have Yolo County Medi-Cal and have met with me, and, you know, that would be the nexus. So I don't think it's just, again, I can't see it, so I can't speak to it unless I can see it, but.
Yeah, the language we have is just currently receiving housing, shelter, outreach, food services in West Sacramento, which is a fairly broad.
It is a broad term.
Including Sacramento, folks from Sacramento, from woodland, from other parts of Yolo.
I think it is meant to mean West Sacramento services, so YCCA, or Services For Me, or Shores Of Hope, or other nonprofits that serve West Sacramento.
But the problem with that is that that's a definition of people who are homeless in West Sacramento. That is not, the definition's not West Sacramentoans who are experiencing homelessness, and it's not a trivial distinction in terms, and I understand from a social services perspective that they're all people, and you want to serve them all.
Right.
From a community, you know, voter, democracy, and ultimately financial perspective, as a beginning point, it feels like we ought to be starting with West Sacramentoans who are experiencing homelessness. And if we are successful and we figure, and we can see, you know, with a test here and a test there, that we're not going to be creating this attraction problem that is widely perceived in communities like ours, that we can expand from there. But if we go all out and serve everyone who's experiencing homelessness in the community and it becomes too expensive and/or the community backlash is too strong because we end up, it appears that we're recruiting folks from outside of our community, we won't even be able to serve the core population any longer. And I just feel like these pilots are, it's really important to get them right from the beginning and to build, and to think about building support for them in addition to deploying them at the same moment.
Build them out.
Right, build them out rather than start big and come back slow, I mean, come back smaller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments. I agree. We have a very small program, and we want it to be successful. And we have received a presentation last year where we received information that in excess of seventy percent of the folks living in our West Capital motels were residents of Sacramento. And so what we want to make sure is that folks that are participating in this particular West Sacramento pilot are and have been very closely tied to this community. So I wasn't offended by the been unhoused and living in West Sacramento for more than one year. I think that kind of did establish some loose residency. But I do understand, like, the mayor's concern about currently receiving housing, shelter, outreach, food services in West Sacramento, because anybody could cross the bridge or take a bus in to receive services. So I would be in support of trying to be more specific as to, and I understand that you're going to be doing a vetting process, and these are people that you come into contact with on a daily. So there's some aspect of this is going to be your familiarity with the folks that you come into contact with. But perhaps we do need to either fine-tune or shorten this list, so that way we are specifically targeting the folks that we hope to target that are here.
Representative DeSma.
Yeah, it's just a question for you, Mark, in terms of, I know you can't see the language that's there. You're the expert, and I'm just trying to get your sense of how is the goal we're setting out, or the eligibility goals we're kind of laying out, are those easily ascertainable to you? I mean, you're talking, these folks are going to be able to recognize that West Sacramentoans who's all of a sudden may find themselves in a homeless situation. And so for instance, you brought up the distinction between somebody who's getting Yolo County services here and West Sacramento else. Is it easy for you to ascertain that they actually were a West Sac resident or are a West Sac resident? I don't know what your vetting process is like, and just your experience will be.
It's fairly easy to ascertain. Most people that I come in contact with, I know kind of from encampments or being out in the community or Motel Task Force or other things, so it's very uncommon that someone comes to see me, not very uncommon, but it's unlikely that someone comes to see me that I haven't seen before out in the community. And then the ones that I don't are usually word of mouth and referrals from other social services agencies like Cal Works and things like that, and then it's very easy to determine that they actually are homeless in West Sacramento and have a nexus here. So, and furthermore, most of the people that I am going to be referring to Downtown Streets Team, it's not going to be on the first meeting, it's going to be people that I have rapport with that I'm referring. You know, it's twelve to fifteen people. I had twenty-three walk-in appointments just last week, so there are plenty of people that I already know that I am familiar with, that I am certain are West Sacramento residents that I will be trying to refer to this program.
When you say you're certain they're West Sacramento residents, they were West Sacramentoans who are now experiencing homelessness.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, it's not a questioning of the judgment, it's just I'm going to have to answer, we're all going to have to answer, you know, in the community.
Sure.
What, how are you making sure that these things, you know, this is not going awry? And I think we want to be able to provide that assurance and then verify with the data. So the other thing I was going to suggest in this piece is that, is that by these, you know, especially if we can eliminate the first bullet, that we, you code them, you code individuals by these, so that when you, you know, come back with a progress report, you're able to tell us, you know, this many had had a permanent address, this many had, you know, these elements, so we're able to get a sense of the dimensions of the clients that were served.
Yeah, my comment, I hope it wasn't construed as, I don't trust your judgment, I'm asking for your judgment, on being able to get to kind of the goals we're articulating and as much as you can help formulate the right criteria or eligibility criteria we're talking about to get to those goals, I think you should be consulted, because the other one has to look at it.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, so maybe, I mean, I think the first bullet, to me, is the most problematic, but if the, so if we remove that bullet and if we, in the, maybe if you just, and we don't need to write it here, but if there was a sentence in the narrative above the bullets, it just said that the purpose is to serve West Sacramentoans who are experiencing homelessness, so the overall policy is established, so we don't have to write every single word down here at the council, which I think is reflective of both what our prior policy direction has been and certainly the spirit of the Measure E work.
I would actually be open to expanding the length of time for bullet number two. It reads currently, currently couch surfing or staying at a friend or a family member's house in West Sacramento and have been for at least one month. Not to be super strict, but that really does open up the possibilities for folks to just hang out for a month and then say they're eligible. So I mean, if it makes more sense to expand that amount of time just to maybe residence requirements or whatnot, I would be open to that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that. What do you think about that, Mark? Is that something that be putting too many restrictions, or do you think that that would be a good policy to follow?
No, I think moving it to maybe three months would be fine. One month, one month is kind of short, you know, someone could just be here a month. So I think moving it to three is fine.
Well, especially in light of the last factor, which is being unhoused and living in West Sacramento for more than one year, you know, we, just to compare it to that, that seems a lot more stringent a requirement to be unhoused for a year versus couch surfing for three.
Okay, all right, so, I mean, just to summarize, so it would be the removal of that first bullet and the three months in the second bullet, the more broad policy sentence about West Sacramentoans who are experiencing homelessness, and then the other two, the other two sentences I made was, in the performance metrics include, just make sure there are metrics on both reducing the incidence of homelessness and community impacts. And at the very beginning of the document, which is what the goals are, that the goals at least include reducing the incidence of homelessness and community impacts.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, to go back to that first bullet.
Oh, yes.
Would it work, and I'm okay with removing it, but because it came to us like this, I'm assuming that there's rationale I'd love to hear more about, but what if it were West Sacramentoans currently receiving housing, shelter, outreach, food services in West Sacramento? So it would add the, you have to be, you couldn't be from Stanislaus or Sacramento, you have to be West Sacramentoans in that category. I don't, I'm trying to actually address your concern about it not being a West Sacramentoan.
Yeah, I think I'd be fine with it, as long as we are defining clearly that when we say West Sacramento, always here, we mean someone who was prior to experiencing homelessness lived in West Sacramento, that, but being homeless in West Sacramento does not make you necess, it does not make you not a West Sacramento, in the world, but for these purposes, that's not what we're describing.
Because I was imagining in someone in that category that's a West Sacramentoan that could use the job training and leadership skills of this program, that actually could get them off having the shelter, having those services. So I was trying to figure out if this program could actually help someone move out of having these, needing these services if they were to get a job. of having these, needing these services if they were to get a job after this program or something else. I, that's, I was just trying to be a little broader, I think, in my imagining who, who could participate. But I, I definitely agree, it has to be, this, this population sort of has to be West Sacramento's and this can't become a magnet program here.
I think my only concern is the question of whether or not it's a, an and or an or. Like, if it's housing and shelter and outreach and food services, because there are some folks that receive food services but aren't homeless. And I want to make sure that the folks that are in the most dire need of receiving these services aren't just showing up at our, you know, YCCA, uh, food distribution on Friday. I tell you, there are lots of folks that, that are in great need of these fresh foods and I'm happy that we give them out, but they might not be the appropriate recipients of, you know, there might be other folks that are in greater need. So if it were an and, I think that would narrow down the scope of, you know, the participants that I think we're trying to direct the services to.
All right. So are, just a quick question, because I think directionally, I, I think we leave that issue clear. Um, I, I just want to make sure that it's, if we approve this tonight, that that can be amended as part of that, but everyone.
Mr. Laura?
Yes, we'll, we'll look at the scope of work, uh, specific language. And, and again, this is a pilot, um, we're, we're going to be using the criteria here. And then I think talking to Mark, we're, we're fairly confident that we'll be able to fill up the initial team. Uh, however, if we, if we do run into trouble because of, you know, it being maybe too rigid, if we find that to be the case, then we can certainly come back with a, a different look. But I think, given the criteria we have, we're, we're confident we can at least get this thing started. Um, so I think that, that first point, maybe if we could just clarify, are we, are we talking about commas in an and? Or is it, are we talking about striking? If we could just get clarity on that.
I, 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 I walked away thinking that, that the overriding sentence and that these are West Sacramento's, um, I forgot how you phrased it, Mr. Mayor, um, that were, um-
Who are now experiencing-
Now experiencing incidents of homelessness.
So it's a way to document West Sacramento residency, that you're now experiencing homelessness, then we're good.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and the wordsmithing in there can occur in, in any way, shape, form. And I think there were some edits to it, but, um, that's why I like to see the, that's, I'd like to see it walk away with those general points we made tonight.
Okay. Thank you. All right. None of that amends our actual contract or appropriations, so is there further?
That's what I was going to make sure it didn't happen either.
Great. Okay, further discussion? I'm making a motion to approve. I believe Ms. Roscoe made a, made a premature motion, but a legal one nonetheless.
Oh, she did, that's right.
So would you like to second?
I'll second. Would you like to formally make the motion?
I would like to move item nineteen, which is approval of a contract with Downtown Streets Team and adoption of resolution eighteen dash five-three appropriating, but measure refunds for this purpose.
I'll second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carrie's unanimously. We've said a lot of great things about Councilmember Roscoe. I do also want to acknowledge Councilmember Joe Hannison for his, as, as, as he described the thankless work that it is, that it has been, and he's been doing it, um, since the advent of the countywide collaborations on homelessness through the Yolo County Housing Authority, the tenure, the, the tenure plan committee, um, you know, every, every assignment with respect to homelessness, he's, he's taken on and kept, kept the flame alive. Um, uh, and, and we've seen the results in the community in terms of the, our homeless census counts and, and the work that's been, that, that Mr. Sawyer, a lot of that was laid, the groundwork for that was laid uh, by the, uh, work that Mr. Hannison did. And so this is, I, I, as, as you described it, is the most exciting thing in that space that has, has, has happened, but it's really standing on the shoulders of the work that, that you've been doing for a decade, so thank you. Okay, item twenty is a presentation and discussion on the two thousand eighteen pavement management system update.
Thank you. Uh, good, good evening, Mayor and council members. I've been K supervising engineer with the Public Works Department. I'm here tonight to provide a presentation of findings from our pavement management system update project and obtain council guidance to help prioritize how the city funds road maintenance, uh, given the limited amount of, uh, available funding. The pro, the project was kicked off shortly after, after council awarded the contract in March. Uh, staff has since been working with city's consultant to collect, process and analyze pavement data uh, to develop reports of the results. Uh, staff then present the draft findings for comment at the Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission in July. Tonight, we are presenting the results to council and asking for, uh, policy guidance. And based on direction received, staff will then return to present a realistic, uh, road maintenance strategy that will include a list of, uh, potential projects for consideration. Okay, what is a pavement management system? A pavement management system or, um, is essentially a planning tool for managing a roadway network. The plan helps to identify, track, prioritize road maintenance, uh, which can include reconstruction, rehabilitation and, uh, preservation treatments. Now, as for the size of West Sacramento's pavement network, uh, the city owns and maintains a hundred and ninety-one center line miles, which is equivalent to four hundred and thirty-seven lane miles. The four hundred and thirty-seven lane miles can be visualized as a twelve-foot wide lane from here uh, to Long Beach in Southern California. Staff initiated the project with the assistance of a Nichols Consulting Engineer, or NCE, in collecting and evaluating pavement condition throughout the city. Uh, NCD, NCE used data collection vehicles equipped with real-time automated three D digital imaging and laser scanners to collect various pavement distresses, uh, which included the amount of deterioration in the roadway, amount of cracking, rutting or sunken or depressed pavement, uh, base failures, which are imminent, uh, potholes, and, uh, road surface roughness. Uh, NCE has performed similar work for Rancho Cordova, Roseville, City of Sacramento and Sacramento County. The road condition is rated on a scale of zero to one hundred, known as a payment condition index or PCI. West Sacramento is, has a overall PCI of sixty. Uh, this is a decline from a PCI of seventy-four in twenty thirteen and a PCI of eighty-four in two thousand and five. In short, we used to be in the good range and now we are considered fair. This is a, uh, visual representation, a GIS-based map of our roadway condition. The legend further breaks down the net, uh, road network according to, uh, categories on the previous slide. Overall, the city's arterials and collectors are in worse condition than its residential roads. Uh, the roadways generally get, the, uh, these roadways, that is, the arterials and collectors generally get the most use because they are the main thoroughfares for the city's residents, businesses and visitors. Uh, examples of arterials include Jefferson Boulevard, uh, Harbor Boulevard, Industrial Boulevard and West Capitol Avenue. And examples of collector streets include Bright Avenue, Gateway Drive, uh, Del Monte Street and Higgins Road. Do you know, however, that although our local residential roads are currently in better shape, they typically are not eligible for grant funding, so they will depend on local funding sources. Uh, with longer-term life cycle considerations, it is often more cost-efficient to spend on residential road preservation projects than it is to spend on far more expensive, uh, main corridor repaving projects, especially when there is insufficient funds for entire projects. As the, um, upcoming slide will show, it is not unwise to keep the good roads good rather than to spend on the worst roads first.
And before you go on to the, is the, the portion of South River Road in Southport that we are intending to abandon essentially for, for emergency access and for trail purposes, is that? Is that, that, is that included in our score or no?
The draft report has it removed.
Great, thanks.
This imagery needs to be updated.
Thank you. Okay. Now, this slide is a comparison of city's current PCI versus, uh, two thousand and thirteen. Uh, the network repair backlog is now estimated a hundred and twenty-one million dollars. The backlog is essentially the amount needed to bring all the roads to a very good condition. However, this road, uh, this number does not include associated, uh, typical roadside drainage repairs and ADA improvements, often mandated with, uh, road rehab, rehab projects. These additional costs could be additional twenty-five, thirty percent. This is also another, uh, comparison, uh, based on lane miles, uh, of, uh, two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen. As we currently stand, we, we have about a third of our pavement in fair condition, a third in good condition, and a third in, in a poor or fail condition. Staff is aware that it is unrealistic for any city or municipality to fully fund its road repair backlog. City currently has three main revenue sources. Uh, these sources include, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, uh, waste management contract, uh, half a million dollars for Measure E, and one point two million dollars estimated from SB one on an annual basis. Existing CFDs do not contribute any funding to road maintenance, um, just as a side note. And if SB one, which is on the ballot this November, is repealed, the projected funding for ten years would be just seven point five million dollars. Uh, because backlog far exceeds a foreseeable funding, staff is looking for policy guidance and suggestions for potential funding sources. Uh, general revenues and business contributions were suggested at the TMI Commission. Uh, some policy considerations, uh, for council include cost effectiveness, economic drivers, geographic equity, grant eligibility, heavy vehicle traffic and overall traffic volume. This graph shows the most cost-effective approach to maintaining a roadway network. And it basically indicates that to preserve roadways that are in good condition, um, is actually the best method. Uh, once a roadway falls below good condition, it deteriorates quickly and will require far more expensive repairs. Uh, from the graph, the city's overall roadway network has followed the pavement condition curve. Deterioration slows, uh, relatively slowly from twenty, two thousand and five to twenty thirteen and accelerated, uh, five years later. Although our overall network is no longer in good condition, the city does have good roadways that are, that we should try to keep in good condition. Um, and, and example of cost effectiveness of pay, payment, um, payment treatment, preservation treatment may be, um, looking at Village Parkway from Lock's Drive to Stone Boulevard. Uh, in five to seven years, we could spend a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to preserve that roadway. Uh, if we don't, in ten to fifteen years, we would have to expend two point two million dollars. Now, the city has a strong and diverse local economy. This map shows the relative location of its top, um, employers and tax generators, uh, relative to adjacent arterials and collectors that service these, uh, properties. These properties rely on the city's roadway network to receive and deliver goods and services. The available funding is not adequate to make substantial lasting improvements along these major roadways. Arterials and collectors are very expensive to maintain and repair. Uh, for example, the recently completed repairs along Harbor Industrial and Southport Parkway cost almost half a million dollars and was not sufficient to repave entire lanes. Geographic equity, as noted in staff report, um, northern part of the city has older streets than Southport, which has newer roads built with newer subdivisions. Council may consider policy guidance that benefits all parts of the city. Grant eligibility, uh, should also be a consideration. This approach would focus on efforts to get grants for arterials and collector roadways. Uh, only roadways that are eligible, um, are those streets. Uh, past attempts include West Capitol Avenue, which was successful. Uh, staff also applied for a grant to repair Industrial Boulevard and that was not successful. Um, heavy vehicle traffic should also be a consideration. Heavy vehicle quarters such as Harbor and Enterprise Industrial and Southport Parkway fail at a much quicker pace because of the impacts of semi-trucks. And, um, and they also lead to a lot of complaints because those roadways are arterials that are als, also used by the commuting public. Uh, traffic volume should also be a consideration. Uh, Parkway's arterials and collector streets serve, uh, the most of the general public. Uh, with that, this concludes my presentation. Again, staff is looking to council for policy guidance. And Assistant Engineer Jesse Catcar, who's worked diligently on this project, is also here to help with any questions council may have.
Other questions? Councilmember Cindy?
I, I just would, uh, thank you for the, the presentation, um, it's pretty sobering. Uh, the, the attached, uh, program, pavement management program update draft report from NCE had some recommendations in it, and I didn't know if you wanted to speak, are we, did you want us to take those up, um, at this time or that's just, is that just background for us?
It is background information at this time.
Okay. All right. Um, then for me, I, I can start and I, I think all, unfortunately for me, all those issues are, are important. If I, if I were forced to pick a couple of them that perhaps are more important than others, I think the traffic volume, if people are having to use the roadway, I mean, if more people are using it, then I think that's one consideration. Um, again, I think they're, they're, they all are important. The cost effectin, effectiveness, because we have a limited budget, also is, is important to me. Um, of course, I want us to keep, uh, ask, um, fi, trying to seek grants, grant funding. Um, so I don't know, I'm, I, I'm not sure I can actually hone down to like the top two for me.
It's almost like it's a combination of several factors-
Right.
-that would help drive the decision.
Right.
This, this is, um, I, I, I think council member, uh, uh, everything through this, it's just, it's, um, sobering was maybe the word I was looking for earlier when I was going through the, the report. It is, you know, I like to think that, um, you know, we have this limitless, limitless budget where we can fix it all and get it, keep it all, uh, at, at top quality. In, in fact, it's showing that we're, for the most part, um, the roads, especially in the Southport area, are in good shape. But you could look at, look at Southport Parkway, which is, I, I don't have, you don't have the map. It shows it's a major industrial user. have the map, it says it's a major industrial user. That, that, that one is on red, failing. And the state streets, which doesn't take very much to look at those streets to see they're failing. And I, I guess, a couple of things going into this discussion is, is the policy considerations to me are all about setting the community's expectations around our ability to do it all. We can't. This is, especially with the threat that's on SB one, which was a huge windfall, I guess, to even have this conversation. We thought providing half a million dollars for Measure E was just to be enough to kind of keep, you know, potholes filled and keep some minor repair work across the city. But SB one came along and all of a sudden we have, for lack of a better term, some real money to do some, some things which I know we're looking at already. And, and I don't know what the actual plan in the end for us looks like. It's a way to, you're asking us to look at all this and say, okay, pick, pick one. Well, well, no matter what I pick, someone's not going to be happy because I don't not paving their street. And it's just, it's just a, it, it's, it, it's a difficult, you know, formula to try to come up with, with one of these, that's gonna, and we're not. How do you make, you know, it's gotta be all of these things, cost effectiveness, the economic drivers, because we are a big, we, we are a big employer and, and movement of goods happens because of the port and everything else we have here. So all these things matter, and probably the one that probably weighs the best to me is the grant eligibility, is because that one is, the little money we do have, it's gotta be leveraged to make some pretty big changes. So, I, I, is it your thought that there would be, you would come back with a set of recommendations of how we would view the city? Because you have, you provided a list of every street, then kind of its rating, and you could stack rank that based on the, kind of the rating it has. But that's not, you're already starting with the middle, kind of trumps, the good, the good, is it the good PCI that you're looking for? That's in that range to kind of be able to start on, correct? That you want to maintain that as the strategy, right? So, I'm trying to understand what the, what, what does it look like coming back? And how do we manage that? Because I can give you all my thoughts, but in the end, it's just, like I said, I think you have an idea of what it's gonna look like already.
What the funding sources identified, which is covered in the presentation, we think it's, the best approach may be to, to spend that money on the roads that are still in good condition, to, to hold it in, in good condition as long as possible. Because it's not sufficient to throw at a major reconstruction of Southport Parkway.
Well, I, I get that, that's, okay. And, and maybe we have to say in practical terms with those policy choices. So if you're telling me that the choice that I'll have to make is repairing the, trying to think of a neighborhood off the top of my head, if we're gonna go up to the Broderick area that I see that has a lot of green and blue up there that we require, or the yellow and bright, trying to maintain those and get those, and that will get us half a million dollars, two million dollars, but we're gonna maintain South, not maintain Southport Parkway. I'm not sure that's a, again, if that's how it comes back to us, then I'm, I'm not sure. Would you overlay on that sort of the, the grant opportunities, that what, what would be driving your decision towards that?
Absolutely. It would not just be mutually exclusive approach. We would probably take everything into consideration. We would like council to help prioritize these things. And any suggestions on, you know, the, how to use what types of revenue, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, we're in a statewide crisis. I mean, this is a crisis statewide. So, I, I mean, I looked at the map and my, my reaction was the same. Okay, where would I like to, where should we go first to make some improvements? But that's not really what we're looking at. What we're really looking at is how, where should we go first to maybe not have it go from yellow to red, or green to yellow? There's not, there's really not going to be any significant resources to fix some of these problems, only to not have some of the problems get even worse. We're 10 years behind the counties, which have already gone through this, and Yolo County and the McGowan era was having to deal with converting roads to, you know, letting roads grow to gravel. And we used to, you know, laugh is probably not the right word, but you know, we used to say, well, you know, the, the poor county folks, you know, in the cities though, we have it all, we, we got it handled. And that's just no longer the case statewide, right? Virtually, I mean, the statewide average is fair now. Sacramento is fair now. Davis is fair now. Los Angeles is poor. San Diego is lower than 60. You know, NCE has made a whole cottage industry of going around and telling everybody that they need to spend five, five gazillion dollars in their cities. So, there's, I mean, there's no, there isn't an answer to come back with in terms of how to fix the stuff. It's really how to manage, how to do some triage, basically in terms of, in terms of the road system. And it's so, it is, for that reason, it's extraordinarily sobering. And I don't, I have no idea what the answer is. At Secog, we're definitely grappling with this, but we could devote every dollar in the region for road repair only, and not any new, new roads or new transit or anything, and still not make a huge dent in, in this. And so it's a, it's a massive, massive problem for, for the state, and that the public certainly expresses. And then the public opinion poll says that they're gonna vote to repeal SB one. So it's just, it's, I mean, the, it's a real challenge, and I don't, I don't know what the answer is either. I do think in our own city, public works aside, on the planning side, there's a fundamental question we have to ask ourselves. There was a time when trucking, truck impacts and revenues and jobs were all connected. And so you would have a industrial facility here, a warehousing facility here, that produced a significant amount of truck impacts on our roads. We don't get, we really get, don't get any additional money from the state or from county allocation formulas because we have all this trucking. We get the same, we get per capita and by lane mile, the same money that Rockland gets with essentially no trucking of consequence. So that's a burden borne by the citizens here. But that used to make kind of sense for us, because we would get higher levels of sales taxes from those businesses and/or they would employ our residents. But today's, today, so many factories and warehouses don't employ much of anybody. So where there might have been 500 people at a facility generating a lot of truck trips, now there might be 18 employees there. So we have to, we have to ask ourselves as a community, as a matter of planning policy, whether or not we still, why should, why should we still be interested in zoning for and allocating land for industrial uses or manufacturing and warehousing uses when they don't, when they neither employ people nor produce any local revenue for the community and at the same time create some of the really extraordinary costs that we face on roads like industrial and harbor, that then suck away the, the limited resources that we have from being able to deal with other roads in, in the city? That's not a, that's not an actual item for none of it, this is a public works item. But it's, I think, is, at least, as, as, this issue keeps coming up, the changing nature of what industrial development looks like in terms of local revenue and jobs. And we're still planning, and this is not us specifically, but us as a society in California, local governments are still planning as though, you know, you hit the jackpot when you get it, when you get a warehouse. And maybe not. If the sales tax gets booked somewhere else, and there are 18 people there working instead of 500, and then there's 50 trucks going out every day, maybe that's not such a good deal any longer for a community like ours. And we, and this, this sort of issue, I think, is calling the question. Ms. Johansson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, Ben, the, so the backlog's $121 million, and that, that's to get it up to, to good. So I, I'm thinking along the lines of, of the mayor that, you know, it's just not realistic to, to set that as a goal. So, you know, maybe looking at better than it is now, or definitely not letting it degrade. So if we did nothing for two years, what would the cost be? Would you have an idea what the cost would be?
As far as the backlog?
Yeah, we'd, no, say, yeah, the backlog. Say we just stopped doing, so we didn't put any money into roads at all. What would that $121 look like in two years? Is there a way to assess that? Because to me, that's kind of the, we need to at least spend that money so we don't continue to backslide. So I'm looking at a number to prevent us from backsliding. And so I think that goes to your point, that, you know, we need to look at making sure roads that are in good condition stay in good condition because of the cost of, of the degrades to a certain point, and just you have to rip the road up, and it's really, really expensive at that point. So in terms of the triage, you know, I, I think, I think you're right in terms of looking, you know, trying to preserve what we have in terms of the good roads first. But then to the roads that we can't do that, that we have, you know, more dire need, then what are the grant funding sources behind that? And to the extent there is some business nexus between those roads, I would be concerned about, you know, if it gets to the point where we're actually adding another levy or whatever on businesses here, even though that particular business may not have any particular jobs, they may support other businesses in town that do have jobs. So there's kind of a synergy there. It'd just have to be something we take a look at. But, you know, I don't know what our authority would be to, you know, add a levy to certain businesses. I'm sure it would be potentially a disincentive to, you know, for business to locate here if they see that there's an additional levy, if they've got any kind of truckier transportation. But the other way to do it would be to not levy on them, but do something like, like continuing Measure K or J, and to have a discussion in council in the future that these businesses generate X amount. We don't want to tax them directly, but what we'll do is we will segregate a portion of the general fund specifically for road repair based on that business income. So some type of analysis like that. It'd be more, you know, more, not like a J and K allocation where it's just the roads and streets, but it's maybe centered toward business, the income generator. So we don't, wouldn't get to a point where we're penalizing the businesses that may not themselves employ a lot of people, but they may provide some support services to, to businesses that do employ a lot of people. And in terms of the equity, I think we do need to not just focus on the streets that are, keeping the streets that are in good repair, in good repair. But, you know, you look at the map and, and the state streets are, you know, there's, there's an issue there. So we have to, you know, make sure that we are allocating funds to help those folks as well. The others, I don't see any huge blocks. I know in the, in Southport, you know, those roads are a little more rural out there, and I can, you know, they're very rural, and they don't really have the traffic, but I don't think they've been maintained for quite a while. In the north part of town, you know, we've, we've had folks come up here, and I forgot the street, it was, what was that? Yeah, that, that, you know, it was just totally potholed, and businesses there were just going to be moving out. You know, those are obviously things that we need to take care of. But there isn't, $121 million is a lot, you know, it's, what is it? A quarter, quarter of our entire levy or flood protection system, something like that, a fifth of it. So it's just, it's, we, I mean, there's no way that the backlog, I don't think is ever going to be fixed to good unless there's some type of political will at the state level, like SB one, to keep a, keep a overall levy in place that would help that. But I don't know if that gives, gives you much help, except to support the, you know, keeping good, good streets fixed. And then maybe looking at a way that we could maybe look at how businesses that cause wear and tear in the city, maybe some type of funding mechanism, maybe not direct, but maybe an indirect funding mechanism, particularly in those areas where they're operating.
Yeah, it seems like one, it doesn't generate any money, but one, one, one just budgeting approach to deal with this. Because our, when you show us maps like this, we wanna like, let's go do state streets or whatever. And if you were to, whether through subaccount or some other budget mechanism, preserve some amount of money that is fixing the roads that are not failing yet. You know, so doing what you would do, which is can't be what we would do. But we need to, we need to do both. And our, your instincts will be the exact opposite of ours. And so if you, if you're able, in the budget process, to segregate them out, so it's clear every time, it's, you kind of, we kind of have to write a letter to ourselves, each budget saying, remember that in addition to doing repairs, you also wanted to maintain some of the roads that you have now at a cheaper level. We won't be able to do 100% of that. But we, but I think you'll wanna, you'll wanna remind us in that process that we, that we, that we, we've, we've expressed an interest in, in making sure we, we won't be able to stay on top of it, be, be able to continue to, you know, try to, try to prevent as many of the future problems as we can. So like I said, it doesn't produce any more money, but it might, in terms of just the fiscal discipline to, to make the, the portfolio of investments in the road system, it might help us.
Yeah, and I was gonna bring up that point around that kind of approach to where you also kept some even available leverage for grant opportunities. I think that's gonna, so you look at areas that, you know, focus areas, either from a business impact perspective or from residential impact, you know, like the state streets to acquire kind of major capital improvement. You know, can you create two, two kind of separate funds with approaches around, one would help maintain and then keep some funds available in case a grant opportunity came up? That would really trans, help us transform, be at the state streets or some of the other Southport Parkway, because if it's a business, goods mobility type grant, it might become available. I want to make sure we have something so that it can be impactful. I think that might be the approach to take. I think you're right, like, we're not gonna be able to do, we want to be able to care for both. And, and our penchant is to sort of like, we need to go, it's like a target, the red in the central, the central part of the city, is to fix it. I know we have some plans for that already, but anyway, we're just gonna have to figure out an approach that kind of feeds both.
All right, Ms. Madry, you have sufficient direction?
Yes, I believe so. And there are a couple of strategies highlighted in the staff report that I think we have to look at. I'll just point out, one, there's a Senate bill that we've been supporting to allow our EIFD to be able to also fund ongoing maintenance. And as we do big capital projects, take Southport Parkway for example, that could be an EIFD expenditure. I think we have to begin to look at opportunities to capitalize maintenance or build in maintenance costs to the overall CIP budget. So I think it's a combination of strategies, and we'll continue to work through this process as we, as we get ready to bring it back to the final adoption. Thanks.
All right, very good. Thank you. That brings us then to item 21, which is consideration of Resolution 18-52, delegating authority to the city manager to approve development impact fee deferral agreements and review administrative policy specifying certain authorities delegated to the city manager.
That's me. Good evening, Mayor, council members. The general powers and duties of the city manager are outlined in Section 2.08 of the municipal code, but the city, the city council has periodically added more specificity to those broad powers and duties of the city manager or delegated to other administrative authority. This has taken place in the form of minutes, minute orders, resolutions, and ordinances. One area in which the council has previously discussed deferral of authority to the city manager was with development fee deferral agreements. Back in 2008, staff conducted a city council workshop on potential development impact fee deferral programs, and council provided feedback at that time to, to the city manager to allow such deferrals on a case-by-case basis, but not beyond final inspection. And the city manager had discretion to do so for projects that were in economic or housing targeted areas. Since that time, staff from finance and community development have been working jointly on development impact fee deferral requests for both residential and commercial projects, staying within the discretion, the direction provided by the city council at that workshop. Recently, consideration of these deferral agreements were placed on hold by administrative services and the city manager's office for audit purposes until such time as the city council could seek consideration for a more formal delegation of this authority, which staff is now requesting in Resolution 18-52. Notably, much of the analysis conducted in 2008 regarding fee deferral programs is still valid today. The staff report on page two outlines an analysis of the three typical levels of deferral programs, including the fiscal and administrative impacts, potential risks, and benefits. Staff recommends council adopt Resolution 18-52, delegating authority to the city manager to approve development impact fee deferral agreements, consistent, consistent with the process applied since 2008, which is on a case-by-case basis in economic or target housing areas and not beyond final inspection. Separately but relatedly, in 2012, council adopted an admin policy to have one centralized listing of the delegated authorities that can be, and that policy can be amended as needed. As noted in attachment two, staff is proposing a limited As noted, an attachment to, staff is proposing a limited number of non-substantive edits to this policy. Given that the city has a new city manager, this is also an opportunity for the city council to review the delegated authorities and, outlined in the policy and make any changes. Staff recommends council approve admin policy 1A-15 and the minor changes to the list of delegated authorities. Council may also request any other changes deemed necessary or appropriate to that list. In addition, if council approves Resolution 18-52, such authority would also be added to the admin policy. This concludes my presentation. Charlene Hamilton and Roberta Raper are also here if you have any questions about the fee deferral program. Thank you.
So on the proposed minor changes, one of the, and I should just say for context, in the past, we actually have, not every single time, but with new city managers, we have often narrowed the scope of delegations while, while they're in their, in their training phase. We've rarely begun with an expansion. So, but, but the severance package policy, which we adopted at the beginning of the recession because we needed to get, we needed to have a rapid response option for the city manager to take actions in order to effectuate reductions in force as a result of the recession. You're proposing a pretty, a pretty dramatic change here, right? From 60 days to six months or?
It's actually, it was always six months. That was basically a typo, the 60 days. The authority under the policy was authorizing up to six months of salary.
I'd like to revisit that. I mean, the six months of, we, six months of severance was a, what, I mean, we, we adopted a set of pretty, pretty severe policies, very much intending to maximize the number of our staff who could either retire or leave city service in order to save resources so that, so no layoffs had to occur. And so we may, you know, we set ranges like that, that were, that were out of, out of normal and because we were in an extraordinary time. And I'm not sure that that's the right, as a delegated matter, as a, you know, as a, that in all cases, that a six months, the six months, it can be a fairly significant amount of money to not have any, any review by the policymaking body. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I was looking through the others to see if there were, if there were similar delegations that were done as part of the recession actions that were recommended by the budget committee, which is the staff committee. I didn't see any others that were, you know, potential finance items, but that, that one definitely stuck out at me as something that I remember doing as a, like, we, we have to take some extraordinary actions, but this is not that time any longer.
We can bring the actual admin policy back for review if you'd like to do that, or we can just strike the?
Let's get other comments too, and that's the whole thing. So do you have any, Mr. Johannesburg?
I think your request is reasonable.
So you want to bring it to 60 days, but not six months, is it?
Or three.
I was going to say, I don't know who does the 60 day. But up to three months would be within the approval authority, I think. Anything beyond that, you're right though, is we need to make sure that there's a review by the council or policymaking board, as you put it.
Are there other, any other questions or?
No, I would say that, I know that, yeah, I'm recalling, six years ago, we kind of brought it in. But I think it's a little bit different. It's one of the advantages of bringing in somebody that's been on the team for quite some time. They understand the nuances of city government policy. And I think that, I want everybody to believe anything different, that's what's occurring. Is we have a city manager who has been practicing in the city, in this city government for years and understands probably more so the policies that we're talking about than we do. And so I think it's, this is totally reasonable in my mind.
All right, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
With a modification?
With the modification, yes, to three months.
Okay, that's seconded by, seconded by Councilmember Sandin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Turning down the motion carries. Council calendar, Mr. Burley.
So a couple of items that are coming up in the next month or so. On August 30th, there is a grand opening for the 980 Central Project apartment complex in the Bridge District. That starts at 5 o'clock and that's on a Thursday. Then the League, League of California Cities Annual Conference is coming up September 12th through the 14th. And I believe Councilmember Sandin has been nominated as our delegate. And then on September 15th, there is a Delta Waterways cleanup in the Bridge District area from 9:00 AM to noon.
Any questions on the calendar? All right, city manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item that was mentioned earlier in Councilmember Sandin's report was regarding animal services. I want to give a quick update from staff's perspective. Amanda, our assistant manager, and I attended a meeting this week with a group of county staff and a few electeds on this topic. The meeting that was scheduled, there may be a possibility that they're actually looking to move that out a bit. And the reason for that is they want to give the cities more time to work with their electeds, to check in again. We don't have an elected representing the city on that. They're calling it a task force, so it's something I was, would be following up with the mayor about getting direction on whether or not the city should have a representative on that. In the meantime, Amanda and I are keeping track of what's going on at the county level. We're also going to be initiating an analysis of other options on that topic and it'll be a future topic for the council. But that's, that's something to keep in mind as that task force moves forward. And then lastly, I just wanted to follow up on the recognition that you all shared for Sergeant Kenny. He's been a great member of staff. I can't really add anything that what's already been said, other than to thank him, 18 years of service with the city. I've had a lot of experience working with him as well and we're going to miss him. But I do want to recognize also Sergeant Engel over there, Eric Engel, who will be taking over that role, very dedicated employee himself, coming off of graveyards, but, but has a lot of work in, over the past few years on issues like homelessness, a lot of other things. So we're in good hands there, but want to thank Roger for his service and welcome Eric to the new role.
We will do our best not to match your old schedule. Can't guarantee it, but we're usually pretty good. All right, city, any questions for city manager? City attorney report. Staff direction from members of the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, as was mentioned, I'm attending the League of California Cities conference coming up. And there's a resolutions, there's two resolutions coming before the conference or the delegation. And so I'd like to share those with the council. So I'll ask, if it's okay, ask the city clerk to distribute those in your next packet. Thanks.
Thank you. We have no future agenda item requests, so is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.